Good evening. Welcome to the Wilmer City Council Meeting for Monday, May 21st, 2007. Roll call.
Mayor Heitke.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Swenson.
Gardner.
Here.
Dockin.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBlick.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Thank you, Kevin. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening to the citizens who are here in the chambers tonight, and visitors, and to our citizens who may be watching the meeting on bracket eight. Tonight we begin the council meeting with four public hearings, and then a variety of committee reports. Before we get to the public hearing, we deal with what's called the consent agenda, and I'll ask the council what they wish to do.
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes the minutes of the last city council meeting, the minutes of May 14th for the utilities, the minutes of the planning commission for May 9th, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority minutes of April 10th. There's also requests here for an exempt permit by the American Legion, and also by Bethesda Foundation of Wilmer. Are there any additions or changes or questions about the consent agenda? Seeing and hearing none, those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We will now go to the first public hearing, and that public hearing is now open. The first hearing has to do with an ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city. This is a request from Mr. and Mrs. Duval. Bruce, would you please explain this?
Mayor Heitke, members of the council. The city of Wilmer received an annexation petition from John and Catherine Duval for a 5.33 acre tract that is on North First Street, west of 16th Avenue Northeast. This request was approved by the planning commission on April 11th, 2007. Since that time, it was determined that the easterly one half of the County Road 47 right-of-way had not been annexed at such time as the Lakewood additions were annexed, so that small portion of right-of-way was added to the legal description for the entire annexation, which brings the annexation up to about 5.7 acres. It's a recommendation of staff that the council adopt the ordinance, assign it a number, and publish it.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone in the audience that has any questions about this, or wants to know any more information about this request? If not, the public hearing is closed on this matter, and it's brought up to the council members.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to adopt the ordinance, give it a number, and publish it.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance with this request for annexation. Give it a number and publish it. Further comment about this? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
The resolution passes. I'll now open the second public hearing, which has to do with an ordinance to rezon certain property from industrial to general industry to I-1 limited industry. Bruce, would you explain this one?
Mayor Heitke, members of the council. This is an action that was initiated by the planning commission, being proposed as a rezoning of property that lies east of Highway 40, and it ranges from Highway 12 south to the north boundary of the Wilmer Pet Hospital property. The proposal is to rezone the site from I-2 to I-1, and this would make the industrial properties more consistent, more compatible with the industrial park uses to the west. The rezoning will not affect the current uses of the properties, as they are all legal uses in the I-1 district. It's a recommendation of staff that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Thank you, Bruce. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to comment or ask any questions about this? If not, that public hearing is now closed. Council members? Councilmember Gardner?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance. Give it a number and publish it. Further comment about this? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes. I'll now open the third public hearing, which is also another ordinance to amend an ordinance called 1060, Section 6. L. 2, and Section 6. M., regarding permitted uses. Bruce, help us out on this.
Mayor Heitke, members of the council. This is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. What's being proposed is the change in text that would allow ag processing plants as a conditional use in the limited industry district, and to change automobile salvage and reduction yards from a permitted use with plan review to a conditional use permit in the I-2 general industry district. What this does is it gives the planning commission and the council more regulatory control over the establishment of these types of uses within the city of Wilmer. It's a recommendation of staff that this ordinance be adopted, given a number, and published.
Again, is there anyone in the audience that has any questions or comments about this proposed change in the ordinance? That public hearing is now closed. Council members? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the ordinance be adopted, given a number, and published.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance, give it a number and publish it. Any questions? Councilmember Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How come we put two things together here, the agricultural product processing plant, and then automobile salvage reduction yard? How come they weren't separate issues?
Primarily an attempt to reduce the number of actions required by the council, the number of ordinances required by the council. They certainly could have been. There's nothing that connects them.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dockin.
No.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Seven ayes, one nay.
That resolution passes. I will now open the fourth public hearing, which is an ordinance prohibiting ultimate fighting within the city. Mick, do you want to comment on this first before I get members from the audience?
I can, Mr. Mayor. This is an ordinance that eventually got to the council after some discussion at the Public Works and Safety Committee meetings on a number of occasions, and I think it all probably got started when there was some indication of interest on the part of an individual to sponsor what is generally referred to as ultimate fighting in the city. And I was going to say ultimately, but that'd be a poor choice of words, probably. Eventually, the ordinance got to the public hearing process, and so the proposal before the council tonight is an ordinance which prohibits ultimate fighting within the city of Wilmer.
All right. Thank you, Mick. Now, all members from the audience, Sergeant Nagin, would you come up, please? And for the record, can you identify yourself and your address?
My name is Glenn Nagin. I live at 605 Southwest 27th Avenue in the city of Wilmer. Little bit, I've been involved in the martial arts since 1964. When it's no fun, I'm going to quit. And I'm agree with most of what you're looking for, I think, and want to accomplish in an ordinance. If it's the barroom brawl type of activities, the mud wrestling, the jello wrestlings, and anything else that you can come up with as an incentive for people to want to participate in. I guess the martial arts things I've been involved in involve all the things we're talking about prohibiting here. The striking, the touching with the heads, the hands, the feet, the body, the kicking, punching, and martial arts. The definition of ultimate fighting is here, and then the bottom, or the last sentence in Section 2, "Martial arts training and contests governed and sponsored by schools of martial arts are also not included among activities prohibited." My perception is that someone that would take a very narrow view of the ordinance could perceive, because judo and taekwondo are both Olympic sports, we're putting our hands on people in judo. We're throwing each other, we're grappling, we're trying to do arm locks, we're trying to do submission techniques where we do choking techniques. Taekwondo techniques involve kicking, punching, blocking. And someone that would take a very narrow view of the definition here of ultimate fighting could prohibit all of these activities from occurring in the city of Wilmer, even, I think, our schools. Because I teach at a school, and I participate, and as I said, when it's no fun, I'm going to quit. We don't have a definition of what martial arts is in here, and I think that's pertinent that we have in here, because that's what we need to have to determine what's a legitimate program and what isn't. The sanctioning thing, there's a lot, a lot of people that start and organize their own systems and become their own sanctioning thing. So it's a really tough road that we're going to look at doing here, and I volunteer, and I think all the people here that are planning to talk would probably be happy to volunteer and help come up with some definitions, because we're not against what you're wanting to do. I think it's just a matter of how we do it and what's accepted. Any questions?
Councilmember Gardner? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sergeant, when you bring this up, I'm wondering if you're also bringing up a concern that someone could come up with a school or some type of sanctioning, and therefore get around the intent of the ordinance. Would that be a concern of yours?
That's one of my concerns. The other side is when we not talk about ultimate fighting, what we see on TV, some of those people are very, very well-trained martial artists. They're trained in how to fall, they're trained in how to punch, kick, block, they understand how to tap out and give up if the pain becomes too much, or if they feel themselves passing out, et cetera. And those are well-trained martial artists that are choosing to pit their skills against someone else. And yes, the TV glamorizes it, and, you know, shows that some of the fantastic techniques that are used, but in any boxing match, wrestling match, people get bloody noses occasionally, and people do get injured occasionally. Now, having said that, other than a dislocated ankle and probably a couple of broken toes in those years since 1964, that's all I've sustained, and I've competed in, and coached, and trained for a long time.
Glenn, Sergeant Nagin, can you explain? My understanding is that ultimate fighting is not sanctioned at this time. Is that right?
Well, what's the sanctioning authority? That's the hard thing. You and I could decide to set up our own martial arts system, and sanction our own martial arts system, and claim that it's a nationwide activity. That's the fallacy of what we're describing and talking about with sanctioning. Do we have legitimate sanctioning things? You know, yeah, we got Olympic teams, national governing body for judo and taekwondo because they're Olympic sports, but a lot of the other martial arts are not Olympic sports, and don't necessarily have the national governing body.
Okay.
And so their parent organization is the organization that sanctions rank, sponsors tournaments, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else in the audience? Greg, welcome. Could you introduce yourself and your address?
I will. Honorable Mayor, members of the council, my name is Greg Anderson. I am from 3153 Eighth Street Northeast. It's a Wilmer address, but technically spitting distance. I'm not really in the city. But anyway, I've come to address the council with respect to this particular ordinance, and it's, let me tell you that every once in a while, we get an ordinance that is very helpful to lawyers. It makes us a lot of money, and this is one of them. This is going to be one of them, because this particular ordinance, the way it is crafted, is going to generate all kinds of legal problems. And if you want to give me business, adopt it, okay? But very rarely does that ever, do we ever do it for that reason. And here, what I'm talking about is, when you do an exegesis of this particular statute, you talk about ultimate fighting, this first paragraph, it says, "Ultimate fighting shall mean any activity, regardless of how named or described, or any other form of entertainment where the primary practice involves individuals in physical contact by striking or touching an opponent with hands, head, feet, or body." The rest of that paragraph relates to exceptions. Now, you won't find in any of the exceptions self-defense courses. Self-defense courses are very common. We do them for women and children, men who want to participate, but if we conduct a self-defense course in this city, it's going to violate this particular provision. You better not go dancing, because if you go dancing, you're touching with hands, head, feet, or body. You better not kiss your wife, because that's touching. You better not shake somebody's hand, because that's touching. All of those would technically be considered a violation, or could be considered a violation. What you're asking is, a judge, you're telling a judge, okay, you go and interpret this, because we haven't defined this well enough. We have, there might be other sports that we want to engage in that we can't do, like water polo. Water polo's been, we've had water polo matches in the junior high pool and the senior high pool. You can't do it under this, because it's contact, it's a contact sport, but it involves touching, and it's not one of the limited exceptions that you have here. This is a poorly crafted statute, and I think it's a bit ingenuine, too. When you go to, when you say in the first paragraph that the purpose of this statute is because ultimate fighting is found to be dangerous, well, all right, if that's the reason why you want to adopt an ordinance, because it's dangerous, well, you can look at some of the other sports involved. Football, for example, it's a dangerous sport. It's a contact sport. Every fall, we have, you know, high school students that are taken out because of injuries. It is a contact, it is difficult, dangerous sport. Do we make it illegal? Of course not. Now, do I like ultimate fighting? No. I don't, you know, I'm not, I don't like it. But, you know, I also don't think we need a rule prohibiting it. And if, but if it is in the nature of this council to prohibit, you know, ultimate fighting, then you have to do a better job of defining what this particular statute, how it's going to be done, because this won't do it. This is just going to make a lot of money for lawyers that are going to be doing all the defense work. So, thank you.
Thank you, Greg, for your comments. Anyone else? Yes, come on up. Good evening, Andy.
Andrew Beer, 1310 Southwest Becker Avenue. I've been involved with Lee's Taekwondo for 13 years, and it really, I mean, it's a great confidence booster. I think a lot of kids get to go into these things, and, you know, it really helps, I think it really brings a leadership role to young people, and I think that's the part of martial arts that people really like. The part that they don't like is all the violence. And I think, I think everybody in this room is probably agreeing that we don't want to have unregulated fighting in the city of Wilmer, but there is ways to have a mixed martial arts competition and do it right. There's, you know, there's judges, there's officials, and there's referees, doctors, and security. Everybody's involved in these things. And there are several gyms in the state of Minnesota that train mixed martial arts, which is a cross between Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu and basically Thai boxing or Thai kicking, which would probably be similar to Glenn Nagin's group of judo, and then also associated with some taekwondo as well. So you have a grappling element and a striking element. So other gyms do this, and most people do it not because they want to fight, but they want to improve themselves. They want to become more physically fit. And so I think that you can have mixed martial arts competitions in Wilmer, if done right, if regulated right, but it doesn't necessarily need to ban everything. I also agree with Master Greg Anderson and Glenn Nagin that I don't want to see all other forms of martial arts banned because of this regulation. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Andy, excuse me. Are you indicating that you think this ordinance would ban these other forms of competition?
Because of the wording that Greg Anderson's brought up, that also concerned me, it could ban the other martial arts competitions, such as kickboxing or boxing, even though I know you're, some of the exceptions state that, I just worry that, I want to make sure that those things are protected as well.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Yes, come on up, please. Good evening.
Chad Riddler, 7045 199th Avenue Northeast in New London. I'm the owner, operator of Riddler's Martial Arts in Wilmer here. And again, I agree with the intent of the ordinance, it's just, it's just not going to work the way that it is. And I understand the intent is safety for those involved, and for audience members, from looking up online to, I think, the chief police mentioned Red Wing, and talk about how there could possibly be fights in the audience, this kind of thing. I think one key issue that you could add to it is, in any type of this event, to ban all alcohol sales. I think that would be an easy way to get it stricken from the bars. I know in a lot of these things, it's in a bar, they come up, they sign their name, they go in and fight, and then the drunks get together and beat each other up out in the parking lot, and that kind of thing. So I think just a simple banning of all alcohol sales. I know I've never been to a taekwondo tournament, a krai tournament, judo tournament, where they're serving beer, so that would be one simple way. I do have an ordinance from Linden City, Utah, that goes into much more descriptive terms about what ultimate fighting is and what it isn't. And when they use the term ultimate fighting, it's actually a copyright proprietary term of the UFC Ultimate Fighting Championships. So these people that are calling themselves ultimate fighters, I imagine, could be sued by UFC for using their term. You're not an ultimate fighter unless you're assigned to a contract with the UFC. This is just street fighting, bar fights kind of thing, is what they're looking at, and I know that's what the individual does. He came, the one that was trying to bring this to Wilmer, came to my gym looking for training, I turned him away. He trains with one other guy in a basement somewhere, so technically, they could call themselves a martial arts school, and they could say, no, I train Kudo Bow, or something. They could just make up a name and say, this is a martial arts gym, therefore, I'm not breaking the ordinance. And I think one of the other concerns is that if this ordinance goes through with just a fighting, unsanctioned fighting, if your police officer responds to a domestic disturbance, do they charge them then under the unsanctioned fight rule, because they didn't have a sanction or governing body overseeing their fight? I think so. It could open up a big can of worms. It's just a matter of going to be wording, and even with some of the exclusion, there's so many huge loopholes in it that you see what's to stop someone from coming to the gym and say, you know, I'll pay you to sanction this fight. It's like, well, then it's sponsored by a martial arts gym, or they make up their name, and mixed martial arts can mean anything now. It can mean street fighting, karate, boxing, all this stuff comes together now under the term of mixed martial arts. So it's going to be tough for the wording. I think the simplest answer is going to be to bar, like, all alcohol sales from any of these events. I don't know in Wilmer of any martial arts tournaments, of any boxing events, of any, I know Youth for Christ just did an all-star wrestling event. They would have no problem not serving alcohol, I'm sure. So I think that would be one of the easy ways to kind of appease the safety issue of getting in fights out in the street, people getting all worked up after this and getting in fights. A lot of it is alcohol-related. I think so. I don't know if I can leave this for you.
Would you give it to our city clerk?
Yep. This is from the Linden City, Utah ordinance, in which they ban the different types of
Thank you, Chad, for that and for your comments. Anyone else from the audience wish to comment about this? Andy?
I have a couple more comments. Again, Andrew Beer, 1310 Southwest Becker Avenue. One of the other things I'm concerned about, too, is that, since there are quote-unquote mixed martial arts academies or gyms in the state of Minnesota, which do teach Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu and Thai boxing, are we prohibiting them from starting a, you know, a real martial arts gym in Wilmer because we're banning this type of fighting, so nobody can practice those techniques as well? That's another concern I have.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you for your comments. The public hearing is now closed. Now it comes up to the city council table. Council members? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sure has shed a different light on things in my mind when I'm hearing, but I think I maybe would like to hear what our city attorney may view some of these comments, and see if he thinks we're okay, or if he thinks we should rework this a little bit, if that's okay.
Rich, are you, do you want to make any comments at this time?
Well, just briefly make a few comments. I think the speakers that have taken the podium are taking parts of the ordinance and taking parts out of context. They, obviously, the analogy to a domestic abuse situation, I don't know how anybody could possibly make that analogy. I don't know how anybody could say a domestic abuse situation that the police department is called to is some form of entertainment. In fact, I find that comment rather offensive to try and make that analogy. Also, I think practically every one of the speakers couldn't make their presentation without referring to martial arts, and that's what the last sentence of Section 2 specifically does, is excludes martial arts. But I guess it's up to the council. If they, you know, want to continue this and have more discussion about it, that's certainly up to the council.
Dennis, anything else?
Just so, so you think that the intent is clear, you wouldn't have any problem with the definitions and prosecuting under the proposed ordinance, then?
I think any ordinance is up to interpretation and the good discretion of the law enforcement that's enforcing it. I guess I'm not really sure where Officer Nagin is coming from. I haven't seen his enforcement of the law to be in the nature that he is concerned about, nor have I seen that out of the other officers in town. But sure, you can say that, I guess, practically about any ordinance or any statute. If you want to try be a nitpicker and bring everybody to court for every little thing, we can issue tickets for 31 miles per hour in a 30 mile an hour zone. It's a violation of the law to go 31 in a 30, but in 33 years, I have not had one ticket come across my desk for 31 in a 30. You apply common sense.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Rich, did we follow Red Wing's ordinance on ultimate fighting?
Yes.
Okay. And this is a comment to Mr. Anderson, then. Have you defended anybody down in Red Wing? No? Okay. I would ask--
Greg, can you come to the microphone, because we're on tape?
In responding to Mr. Ronning's concerns, I would ask him seriously that, you know, to look at the first paragraph of, the first half of Section 2, that describes what constitutes ultimate fighting, and tell me, from that language, tell me that it doesn't include just a simple handshake. You know, is, now, would an officer use discretion? Of course he would. Would an officer arrest somebody for making a handshake under this statute? I doubt it very seriously. However, if you're going to adopt a statute, do the best that you can in drafting that statute, and making sure that the text means what it means, that you can give that to an officer, and he can say, okay, this is what's prohibited. an officer and he can say, okay, this is what's prohibited. So you don't have to have the officer say, okay, well, what does that mean? You know, so look at the statute. If you can eliminate that kind of stuff, then you've done a good job. But if you look at that statute and say, I can't, I can't do a handshake, I can't teach self-defense, I can't even go dancing in a studio without violating, potentially violating the statute, then you need to rework it. That's all.
Rick, anything else?
This is directed to Officer Nagin. You had talked about Olympic sports. What's an Olympic sport for martial arts?
The two that I'm aware of that are in the Olympics are Judo and Taekwondo, but there's many, many other martial arts. And those are the two that have been able to meet the standard for the United States or the Olympic Committee to, some of those standards are having competition of those arts on a certain number of continents of the world, et cetera, and having a national tournament that leads to a champion. That's some of the things they use for a guideline. But there's many, many martial arts. Those are the two that have met the standard to, for the Olympic standard.
So how many schools of martial arts are there that are nationwide or around the world?
I would guess that it's probably up into the millions and around, just in the city of Willmer, we've got Lee Taekwondo, Riddler Martial Arts, there's one that meets in the Slim Chance Building, city of Atwater's got one, city of New London's got one. Those are the ones I'm familiar with, just in our local area.
Okay, so Judo, what is that?
Judo is a grap, similar to, I guess, jacket wrestling type sport. You wear a uniform, you grip the clothing, you just try to throw your opponent with a throwing technique to the ground. You can try to grapple and score points by holding him under control on the ground. If you and I were competing against each other in a tournament, and you got a chokehold on me, and you choked me out, you'd win if I tapped out to surrender, you'd win. We use arm locks to control. If you got an arm lock on me and I tapped out because of the pain, it's a submission technique. Those are the basic methods of winning in Judo competition.
Okay, but ultimate fighting, you can do everything.
Ultimate fighting, no, they don't allow certain kick, or, you know, kicks to the groin, punches to the throat, and certain dangerous techniques are taken out of it. Now, having said that, does that mean that somebody is not going to get hit and knocked out occasionally, or rendered unconscious as a result of the choking technique? Because I've seen people use a choking technique like we use in Judo and Jiu-Jitsu and ultimate fighting, be forced to submit, or they pass out. And the good part there is that it's under control of a referee, and Judo in its existence has been around for over 100 years, and I'm not aware of any deaths that have ever occurred as a result of a Judo competition, or a Judo chokehold, or anything like that.
But what we don't want here is where you get into the ring, you start smacking a guy, you grab him, bear hug him, throw him down, jump on top of him, and then you just keep banging away at him. That's what happens in ultimate fighting. That's what you see on TV, isn't it?
Well, I'm not sure that I see them, they get thrown to the ground, but we see those kind of throws in wrestling competition also.
But then you don't jump on them, though, and start hitting them with your hands in wrestling?
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
That's what we're trying to eliminate.
And in my Jiu-Jitsu system, we don't, you know, we don't do that when our guys go to tournaments. They can start punching, they can start kicking, but the minute they put their hands on someone, then it becomes a grappling system, and when I'm close enough to get my hands on you, then it's a throw, grappling, submission-type attempt, or just controlling.
So when you have contests in Willmer, is there admission paid?
I haven't hosted any contests in Willmer. Some of our students have attended contests in places like Litchfield and Owatonna and some other cities around Minnesota. And they're not, you know, nobody's bleeding, nobody's, they're controlled.
But is there admission? Do you charge, do they charge admission, or is it just basically family members that come and watch?
The majority of people that are there are family members, but they'll usually charge some token amount of admission because they're having to rent the facility where they're holding it at.
Okay. And then no alcohol is there?
Yeah. New London hosts, and Lee Taekwondo for the Willmer unit hosts a large, it's one of the largest tournaments in central Minnesota at the high school in New London regularly. And there's a lot of, how many competitors, Greg?
Three to four hundred.
Three to 400 people, many of them young children, that are in different avenues of competing, from sparring to forums, and et cetera.
And that's all martial arts?
Those are all martial arts.
Contest governed and sponsored by schools of martial arts?
That's correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Reese? Glenn, hold on a second.
Well, I think Rick just hit on what I was going to ask Glenn, and that is Judo itself. I'm not knowledgeable about this, but Judo is also a martial art, then?
It's classed as a martial art.
Because I think what Rick was referring to was the last sentence in here, which says that martial arts training or contests governed and sponsored by schools of martial arts are also not included among activities prohibited in this section.
That's true. That's-
It's pretty clear to me, I guess.
The interpretation of what's martial arts, that's, that was my concern as I brought up to you.
But that's why I just asked you, is Judo a martial art?
It is. It is. But there are many other martial arts, too. That's what we wanted to make sure.
But earlier, in the, in the Section 2, it says, "This shall include but not be limited to any contest or event where kicking, punching, martial arts, or submission holds are permitted." I mean, they might be in there, mixed in there, but it's different than from a martial arts exposition or contest. That's what I'm reading.
Okay.
Difference. Because it says that contact is incidental to the primary purpose of the game. And it's talking about football, and soccer, and baseball.
Self-defense is not a martial art, if that's what you're referring to. I, I'm not sure if that's, you know, if I go and teach a self-defense class where somebody wants to learn how to defend themselves, that's not martial arts. We're teaching-
But then comes the discretionary end of it.
That's a discretionary thing, yes.
Sure it is.
I agree with that.
I mean, Mr. Anderson was referring to dancing, and I like to dance with my wife once in a while, and I like to kiss her once in a while, like you said, too, but it also says, striking or touching an opponent with hands. I don't usually classify my wife as an opponent while I'm dancing or kissing her.
Well, let me ask you, if, if an officer arrested you for that, would you want to pay attorney's fees to defend yourself because somebody was discreet?
I don't think they're going to. I think it's discretionary.
What if it's a self-defense class, and your daughter's getting taught self-defense, and the instructor is arrested because he's teaching her self-defense under that statute? Now, not only, your daughter can be arrested, but the instructor, too. Now you're going to be paying for a defense of an officer who was using his discretion to decide, well, this self-defense, it's not a martial art, but it is contact, it falls within the statute. Now we'll let the judge decide. Meanwhile, you're going to go pay your lawyer, and you're going to have to go through the process to defend yourself. That's, self-defense is a routinely taught course in almost every school. It's in Lee's Taekwondo, it's taught, I'm sure, by Mr. Riddler, and some of the other courses. It doesn't qualify as strictly as a martial arts. And that's the point Mr. Nagin is making. What is a martial art? It depends on who you talk to, and it depends on who you are. Any one of you could go on and start developing new kicks or punches and say, this is my martial art. Nobody sanctioned it. But you can call it that and skirt around the rule here. The statute is bad.
Thank you. Councilmember Gergen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sergeant, in Section 2, it says, it refers to officially sanctioned and regulated boxing and wrestling and team sports. How does, how does one become officially sanctioned and regulated? Are we talking about government bodies that do this, or in some cases, I mean, again, I go back to the question that I posed earlier, under the last sentence, martial arts training or contests governed and sponsored by schools of martial art. What's to, again, prevent just somebody to make something up? I believe someone else mentioned that earlier.
Nothing, and that's, that's the hassle. Certain of these arts have, the ones that are in the Olympics have a national governing body. A number of other ones just have a national organization that has someone that, a high-ranking person that starts his own system, and it spans it, and now that becomes their system and their organization and their rank-granting authority, et cetera. And what Mr. Anderson talked about is nothing prohibits by talking about, you know, what's the definition of martial arts. And that's what I brought out, was my concern, is what is the definition of martial arts? Because a police officer, we do our defensive tactics training, and all the things that we talk about, the striking, the touching, the hands-on, et cetera, we do pressure points, we do active countermeasures, we do all those things to teach our police officers, but the majority of them are not martial artists. And the recognition in the field of who and what is a sanctioned event, even for the people that are making that decision, what's the definition? That's, I guess, what my concern is. Definition's the biggest factor I have.
And one of the issues that faces us, then, is how do we determine what's officially sanctioned and not? I want to, and I don't know what the disposition of this was at the legislature, but I know that the legislature was looking at giving the Minnesota Boxing Commission authority to regulate mixed martial arts events. I don't know what the disposition of that, of that particular piece of legislation was.
Didn't happen.
It didn't happen? Okay. I know that it had been, that had been spoken of, so.
And it's not my intent to start hosting them either by being here. I just want, you know, so that if I choose to participate, I want to be able to do it in Willmer, because I've been doing it for many years in Willmer.
All right. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sergeant Nagin, I've heard here that the definition is the, what we're talking about here, you're concerned about it, Greg is concerned about it. What would your three-sentence definition of martial arts be if we had to put it in here? What?
I'd want to research that, because off the cuff, I'd probably make some errors, too. None of us can write something like that in that quick of a time, I don't think.
How about defining ultimate fighting? What's the major definition of that? Is it, how would you define it?
It's two fighters testing their skills, and they're using a number of different martial arts. And that's where part of that contest becomes attractive to a lot of martial artists, is they may be skilled in a particular style of kicking, or punching, or grappling, and because they want to test it against everybody else's style to see who's the best, and that's where they get out there with a set of rules to determine who's the best.
But am I right in saying that you're against ultimate fighting, or you're?
I'm not against it. I, I watch it, and I get frustrated watching it, because sometimes I say, oh, there's that arm, they should be having that arm bar, type of thing, because I see it and I know it's there, because we use those arm bars. I get frustrated watching it, so I can't watch it too often. But it's, there's some entertainment, and I can understand someone that's very, very good in the martial arts would like to test their skills. Because what we're seeing on TV are some people that are very, very skilled martial artists, that are testing their skills against other skilled martial artists.
But see, we wouldn't know that those are the characters who'll be getting in the ring if it happened in Willmer. We wouldn't know that they're licensed, or they're a martial artist teacher, or an expert in it. We wouldn't know that. There may be some guy in a bar that says, I'm going to get up there, and he's never had any training, and then somebody in the martial arts just wipe him out. That's what we're trying to prevent.
That's why I'd like to have a good definition, so that there's a guideline for the people that are going to make the decision on enforcing this ordinance, to have an understanding and a concept, that if we're going to grant a permit to have this event in Willmer, that the people for the city of Willmer that are granting a permit to allow it, have an understanding based on a definition.
Thank you. I've learned quite a bit tonight.
Councilmember Dacken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I have a lot of respect for Chief Colseth and Attorney Ronning, and their opinion, but I also have heard four gentlemen speak very thoughtfully and eloquently, and I wonder if we shouldn't maybe consider tabling this and asking these four gentlemen, and we have another copy of an ordinance to look at this, and see if we can't better define what it is that we want to regulate, and how we want to regulate it.
Are you making a motion, Jim?
I would make that motion.
To?
To table.
To table. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to table this ordinance. I think you explained that the understanding is to revisit it with some of the parties who have spoken tonight, with our city attorney, probably.
And Chief Colseth?
And Chief. All right, there's a motion to table, and it's been seconded. There's no discussion on that. Mick, there's, or Rich, there's no discussion on that?
No.
All right, so now it's up to the council to vote. Those in favor of tabling it with the understanding that Mr. Dacken made, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed to tabling it, say no.
No.
Roll call. Councilmember Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dacken.
No.
Oh, excuse me, aye.
Motion to table.
Motion to table, aye.
This is the motion to table. Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
No.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
No.
Six ayes, two nays. The motion to table is approved. Okay, the motion is tabled, and the understanding, go ahead.
I would assume that then is going to go back to Public Works, Public Safety. Is that my understanding?
I think that's a good place to start. And look at the definition of ultimate fighting, probably, if that needs any more clarification. All right, thank you. To those citizens who made comments, the motion's been tabled for now. Thanks, Greg. Mick, Greg wants to, he'd be willing to work on that.
If you want to give me a call or something, I can do more.
Thank you, Greg. We finished now the public hearings. We're now down to the Willmer City Council Open Forum, and that's a chance for any citizen to speak to the council and the mayor. Anyone wish to do that? All right, then we will move on to the Finance Committee report. Is there somebody?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, come on up. Come on up. You have to introduce yourself and give your address, please.
My name is Tammy Duscher. I live at 913 Olina Avenue, Southeast. I'm just concerned about the new 16-bed unit you guys are talking about putting at the end of my street. I feel that that's not a real good place to put it, being that it's a residential, and we have small children, the YMCA is real close, park. I feel that that unit should be out somewhere where there's not homes, not families. I've talked to a few neighbors. I didn't have a whole lot of time, but I started about quarter after five tonight, walking up and down my street, going, you know, did you read about it? Do you know about it? I have nothing against mental illness. I have it, that runs in my family, so I'm very familiar with that. Yes, it's a locked unit, but eventually, these people will get an hour pass, or whatever, and they will be out in our community. They will be out in our neighborhood. I don't think it's safe. I think that it should be out in, out where the jail is, or whatever. And I will keep talking to my neighbors. I will get signatures, but I just didn't have time tonight. I just feel that this is, you know, residential, this is homes, this is families, we have small children, you know? You guys opened up that street to the YMCA, which created a lot of more traffic. You guys opened up that street to the YMCA, which created a lot of more traffic, you know? I just, it shouldn't be where you guys are planning it. So I hope you guys take in consideration to not zone it, you know, to take it out of its agriculture zone.
All right. We've heard your comments, Tammy. Thank you very much. I want to just ask clarification whether city administrator, this land that is being proposed, does the use of that land have to go before the Planning Commission or how? I know the county board is making the decision primarily. How is the city involved in the process of siting and planning?
At some point, there will be a particular use application filed. At the present time, the city has received a request for a change in zoning for a large parcel of land. Virtually everything south of Olina Avenue, north of Wilmer Avenue, and east of, or I'm sorry, west of Lakeland Drive that is currently zoned ag has been proposed to be rezoned to a limited business classification, which is consistent with our comprehensive plan. It's what we had anticipated. There have not been any filings made for a particular use on any of that property. So the Planning Commission will be considering the rezoning issue in the near future, but I'll repeat, they have not, there have been no filings made for a particular use on that site.
And Bruce, if the public, if citizens want to make comment about this, where in that process should they step forward and make their comments?
Well, every property owner that lives within 350 feet of that site will receive a mailed notice to their home. If you live outside that 350-foot area, the only notice that would be received would either be word of mouth or via the newspaper. It will be a published notice as well.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council and the mayor tonight during the public forum? All right, thank you for those comments. We will now move forward. The next item is number nine on the agenda, which is the Finance Committee report for May 14th. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item on our agenda has to do with the Rice Hospital and Intergovernmental Transfer Agreement. Mr. Massa, the Rice Hospital CEO, informed us that because there currently is not a set method of calculating the annual intergovernmental transfer, transfer from the hospital to the city, he's proposing to establish a formula of four tenths of one percent of the prior year net assets to determine this amount, and that would begin on January 1st, 2008. Net assets would be used as the basis rather than net income for a more consistent revenue stream for the city. The percentage that they came up with was derived by comparing the three-year average of transfer payments from 2005 through 2007 with the three-year average of the year-end net assets. They also proposed that the minimum amount of any annual transfer payment would not be less than $200,000. Further details need to be worked out by staff, and so we received that for information only. I would just add that there was a consensus, I believe, of the committee that this would be something that would be agreeable, assuming that the details get worked out. Mr. Massa also requested that because of the current financial status of the hospital, that the city waive or defer the 2007 intergovernmental transfer scheduled for $200,000. We raised some concerns about waiving the transfer since this revenue is part of the city's 2007 budget, and it would mean cutting expenditures or searching for other income sources to replace the $200,000 that they would propose that they not give us. Committee did say that we were willing to defer the payments for now, but we'd like to review the hospital's status toward the end of the year. This matter was received for information only. Next, we heard from the Wilmer Design Center. Bev Doherty of the Wilmer Design Center outlined with us the activities that the center had been pursuing. Purchase options are being sought on six city blocks to initiate multi-use development. This would further like to restore Litchfield Avenue by opening up the east and west access points. There's a parking study on Block 50 underway to review the possibility of establishing a downtown commons area and maybe a children's playground possibly funded through the Bremer Foundation. Another project would be to urbanize First Street by working with Heartland Community Action for downtown housing and securing grants, requesting the Housing Task Force to include downtown buildings in revising city ordinances, working with the HRA, are relendable funds available for downtown and applying for Small Cities Development Grant. Street furniture has been purchased and assembled and is ready to be placed by the Public Works Department. Private donations have been received by the group to fund 30 lamppost flower baskets. Walking and biking paths are being proposed for downtown as well as a bridge from downtown to the lakes. The Becker Market is set to open June 7th again this year. And the mural on the Bob Bowe Building facing Rice Hospital will be replaced this year as well. Finally, the Wilmer Design Center is currently establishing itself as a 501(c)(6), it is now a 501(c)(6) but is applying for a 501(3(c) status to facilitate funding potential. That was received for information only, and I'll tell you, the Design Center is doing a lot of work. They have a lot of things going, and it was, it was a very interesting report. The next item that we talked about was teehanger funding. Staff explained to us that the teehanger revolving loan fund is available through the state of Minnesota at zero percent interest. The city has a list of potential tenants and is proposing to construct a building that would house 16 hangars. The rental income from these, these hangars should service the debt on this revolving loan. Following some discussion, there was a motion made seconded and passed, and I will make the motion to authorize city participation in the state of Minnesota's teehanger revolving loan fund program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to authorize the city to participate in the state's Minnesota teehanger revolving loan fund program. Further comment? Kevin, is that a simple motion or is that a roll call? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries.
Final item on our agenda was to amend the 2000 improvement budget and 19th Avenue Southeast paving budget. We reviewed the amended budgets for the 2007 improvement project and the 19th Avenue Southeast paving projects. Amounts were reduced because Southeast Fifth Street will no longer be included in this year's improvements. The 2007B bond issue, which primarily funds both of these projects, is now estimated to be $1,725,000. There was a motion made seconded and passed, and I would introduce a resolution to approve the amended 2007 improvement budget and the 19th Avenue Southeast paving budget as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the amended 2007 improvement budget and the 19th Avenue Southeast paving budget. Further comment about this? Mick, excuse me, we've not heard any more from Herzog and Sons?
No, sir.
Nothing? All right. Those in?
Resolution.
Resolution this time, all right. Roll call.
Councilmember Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
That concluded our business unless there are questions, I'd move to file these minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Next, the Public Works Safety Committee report for May 15th. Councilmember Reese.
Hey, Mr. Mayor. The first item on the agenda was the Wilmer Fest Block Party, and we had Ken Quist from the Wilmer J.C.'s at our meeting. The J.C.'s are organizing and sponsoring the Downtown Block Party, and he was requesting permission to close off part of Becker Avenue and Fifth Street Southwest and also the parking lots in Block 50 and the Masonic Temple Lot. This will be held on, the Downtown Block Party will be held Thursday, June 28th from 4:00 to 9:30. We reviewed as a committee the safety concerns with our police chief and fire chief, and after doing that, we made a motion, which I will make here, Mr. Mayor, to approve the parking lots and street closures as presented for the event on June 28th, 2007.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the parking lots and street closures for the Wilmer Fest Block Party, June 28th. Further comment? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Next item on the agenda was a request from our police chief and from our department for the ninth year in a row to participate in the, with other area law enforcement partners in the Safe and Sober Program, which is funded through the Minnesota Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety. The Wilmer Police Department would be working along with the Candy Island County, the Atwater Police, and the Benson Police Department. The total grant request is for $31,300, and the local match for this operation is only the cost of our police vehicles, the operation of them. Staff is requesting permission to allow the, our police department to enter into a grant agreement with the Department of Public Safety, Office of Traffic Safety for the period of October 1st, 2007 through September 30th, 2008. And they also request permission for the police chief to execute the agreements in order to implement the project on behalf of the Wilmer Police Department and that the county be designated as the fiscal agent on behalf of our police department. So, Mr. Mayor, I would make a resolution or introduce a resolution to approve the application for the grant and permit staff to enter into the agreement as requested.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a resolution to approve the application for this grant that was described and permit staff to enter into a grant agreement with other police units. Councilmember Christiansen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious, Chief Colseth, does the state require any data from you as far as what happens during this grant and how you use it?
That's correct. They, they have a reporting requirement. We have to report the number of traffic stops, contacts, how much education, how much training, presentations, et cetera, that we do. We have to record all the activity and report it to the Office of Traffic Safety.
And does that data have any effect on whether or not you get a next year or is there certain requirements they put on you or no?
They have never turned us down.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Any questions? Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is for the chief too. We won't be patrolling over in Swift County and Benson, will we?
Absolutely not.
Okay, so Benson, I'll stay over there and?
Benson's going to stay in Swift County and we're going to be in Candy Island County. Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? Roll call.
Councilmember Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Bev Doherty was at our meeting. She's from the Design Center, and she was requesting permission to submit for a grant application to Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota for walking paths. And as a result of that application, applicants would enter into a one-year contract to conduct planning that accommodates and encourages more active lifestyles. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to approve the Wilmer Design Center's request to submit a grant application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution to approve the Wilmer Design Center's request to submit a grant application for walking paths. Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Tabliek.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
As we all know, with the closing of our old airport, the Candy Island County is planning on constructing a new four-lane crossing the mile distance between the intersection of Trunk Highway 40, which is at the current intersection of County State 8 Highway 47, up to Trunk Highway 12 where County Road 5 meets it. And this project would be in cooperation with Candy Island County. This highway would cross just west of the current industrial park, and we held an informational meeting that night. Gary Danielson was there from the county, the county engineer, to explain the project and then take public comment from those attending. The total cost was estimated at $3,953,907 with approximately $1,166,240 in federal funding, with the remainder to be shared between Candy Island County and the city of Wilmer. This improvement includes a 10-plus acre storm pond and a 12-inch water main as the larger items to be paid by the city. The project is proposed to be constructed this season, but it wouldn't be paved or signals put up until 2008, and that's when the road would then would be opened. One of our realtors, Mr. Lindeman, raised the question in regards to a railroad spur which we've discussed here at the city council numerous times to be run through the future industrial park. The comments from staff and from county staff was that as the park develops on the west side of County State 8 Highway 47, that type of construction should be considered at that time. No action was taken on this, and that was for information only. The next item on the agenda was, Mr. Craig Holmes was with us again. He's with us a lot, as he waves to us, from Donahue and Associates, and he updated us on the activities during the month of April. The design team is actively working on the detailed design as they head for a 75% complete milestone in July. The facilities plan amendment was prepared and will be submitted to the MPCA. Donahue continues to evaluate the collection system to eliminate some of its infiltration and inflow. Key manholes were identified for flow and lift station times and are being studied. Significant rainfall during this period provided data to identify sources of rainfall, infiltration, and inflow. Construction contract for Project 0713, which is the interim modifications at our existing wastewater treatment plant, was bid and awarded to Schenk Constructors, and design is complete for Phase 2 of the Southern Interceptor, and there was no construction activity in this reporting period. That was also for information only. The next item was just for information, and that was the fact that Candy Island Area Transit is offering free bus rides to and from the senior dining and the senior center during the month of May. The next item was in regards to teehangers, and if you recall, last fall, bids were opened for a 16-unit teehanger, which had been designed by Short Elliott Hendrickson. But due to funding issues, the city decided to downscale the building and rebid the hanger unit, using a 10-unit as the base bid with a 12-unit alternate and no special winter construction requirements. Short Elliott Hendrickson agreed to amend their scope of services and redesign the hanger. The estimate for the new design is $14,500. Including, included in the discussion was the possibility of purchasing a six-unit teehanger owned by Wilmer Air Service, which had been relocated to the new airport. Staff requested and was granted permission to negotiate a price with Wilmer Air Service. The committee reviewed the estimated hours and fees submitted by Short Elliott Hendrickson to revise the teehanger plans, and a motion was made, and I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to approve the amendment to the original agreement with Short Elliott Hendrickson in the amount of $14,500 and authorize the mayor and city administrator to sign on behalf of the city.
Second.
Short Elliott Hendrickson, in the amount of $14,500.
Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Then we discussed the approval of the plans and specs for this project, and then advertising for bids. So, Mr. Mayor, I would introduce a resolution to approve those plans and specs, and authorize an advertisement of bids to be opened June 28th, 2007.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a resolution to approve the plans and specs, and authorize advertisement of bids to be opened on June 28th.
Further comment? Roll call.
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
Then, Mr. Mayor, with the advertisement of bids and the redoing of the project, we also have to revise the budget for the project. So, I would introduce a resolution to adopt the budget as revised.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adopt the budget as it is revised for this. Further comment?
Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner.
Aye.
Dawkins.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlick.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes.
That was the end of our minutes, Mr. Mayor. If there's any questions, we'll entertain those questions, otherwise I would move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries. Next are the Labor Relations Committee report for May 16th. Councilmember Gardner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first item of business, we recognized Bob Bonowitz, the president of the Municipal Utilities Commission, who provided a summary of the commission's general manager search. Mr. Bonowitz advised the committee that the position had been offered to Mr. Bruce Gamm. Mr. Gamm is the manager of engineering and operations at Calcana Utilities in Calcana, That organization is one of the country's 2,200 public power systems, publicly owned and operated utility with 58 employees. The estimated starting date for Mr. Gamm is June 18th, 2007, and following a general question-and-answer period, the committee thanked Mr. Bonowitz and commission members Cray and Gash for taking us through the summary of the hiring process. This matter was for information only. Item number two, city administrator Schmidt presented to the labor committee proposed language to be included in the city's personnel policy and procedures governing the use of city-issued credit cards. Following review and discussion, it was moved, seconded, and passed, and I move the recommendation of the committee that the policy governing the use of city-issued credit cards be included into the personnel policy and procedures as proposed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the policy governing the use of credit cards for the city be included into the personnel policy and procedures. Further comment? Motion, Kevin?
Simple motion.
Those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Opposed?
Motion carries.
Item number three, it was presented to the committee a proposed memorandum of agreement between the city and various employee bargaining groups, authorizing the establishment of post-retirement health care savings plans for city employees. The plan is modeled after a previously approved municipal utilities employee plan, and it would allow employees to shift to a health care savings plan from the current system of leaving severance payouts with the city for the purpose of paying health insurance premiums. Following discussion, it was moved, seconded, and passed, and I move the recommendation of the committee that the council authorize the establishment of health care savings plans under the terms and conditions detailed in the proposed memorandum of agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the council authorize the establishment of health care savings plans as detailed in the memorandum of agreement. Further comment about this?
Councilmember Christensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, the terms, conditions as detailed in the proposed memorandum, is there anything there out of the ordinary? Normal health savings plans?
No, not at all. It's exactly, or virtually, the same language that was used for the municipal utility employees.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Carried.
Item number four, the chair announced that it was the intent of the committee to close the meeting in order to discuss contract terms and conditions with city attorney Ronning. It was moved and seconded to close the meeting, and shortly thereafter, we reopened the meeting. And following reopening of the meeting, it was moved, seconded, and passed for the following recommendation, and I move the recommendation of the committee, that the council approve a new three-year contract with city attorney Ronning. Generally, the contract calls for an adjustment in the base salary of $3,000, 3% wage adjustments in each of the three years, 2007 salary of $1,982, and gap financing for medical and life insurance premiums from the date of termination through qualification for Medicare benefits at age 65.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for this contract language for our city attorney. Further comment about this? Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries.
No further business came before the committee, and, Mr. Mayor, unless there are any questions regarding any of the items in the committee report, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file these minutes. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Next are the Community Development Report, minutes of May 17th. Councilmember DeBlick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on our agenda was the industrial park expansion, real estate services. Staff presented proposals from two local real estate firms to provide marketing and sales services for the expanded industrial park properties, Edinal Realty and Pro One Realty Professionals. The background of the realtors submitted, the proposals was reviewed by the committee. The committee discussed the resumes and proposals as submitted, and staff had recommended that the council engage the services of Pro One Realty Professionals based on their more extensive history with the sales of the commercial industrial properties. Following discussion, there was a motion made that the city engage the services of Pro One Realty Professionals to provide real estate marketing and sales services for the expanded industrial park. Now, I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the city engage the services of Pro One Realty Professionals to provide real estate marketing and sales services for the expanded industrial park. Further comment about this?
Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess this is directed to Bruce, but how, how does this program work?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
Well, are we listing everything we have out in the industrial park with this company?
That's the discussions that have been held between staff and this company, is that as we plat properties and make properties available for development, as the infrastructure is placed and the properties are in fact suitable for development, that they would be part of a listing agreement.
Okay, so there's a certain percentage that they will take off of the sale price?
It's, there's a scale of commissions payable fairly consistent with your typical commercial real estate commission schedule. If anything, it's a little bit light on the, on the commission side of things. And it will, if, obviously, if you've got a large transaction, you're gonna pay a lower percentage, so we would negotiate those individually by transaction.
How do we do it now if we have some property that the city wants to sell?
Typically, it's been something that has been handled between staff and the city attorney.
Okay, and we can't continue to do that?
I feel it's in the city's best interest to have some professional marketing, and along with that professional marketing, and having a professional realtor involved, I think exposes the city to, or gives the city better exposure to out-of-town markets, metropolitan markets, other brokers that this particular realtor is familiar with.
In a scenario, if we wanted to sell, say, five, 10 acres to someone for, for a dollar because they're coming in with a big plant, what kind of commission would we have to pay?
I, I think it would be prudent and based on, my experience, you would pay a commission based on the market value of the property, not on the sale price.
Okay. Now, don't we have a city-county economic development commission?
Yes.
Okay, isn't that supposed to be kind of their, their job, to, to market government land, properties in the county and city?
They do economic development marketing, they do not do real estate marketing. I would see real estate marketing and sales to be beyond the scope of the Economic Development Commission.
Okay, and then, why wouldn't you just put a sign out there and say, "Contact your local realtor," and let everyone in town have a chance at it, and just pay a smaller percentage?
I don't think it would be as effective. I don't think you'd get the exposure, and quite frankly, I don't believe there are an abundance of realtors in the community that have much experience in putting together large commercial and industrial projects, and, you know, really have the background to do so. We've got a lot of very excellent residential realtors.
Okay, but with, with MLS, they belong, they share with St. Cloud, they share with Minneapolis, St. Paul, Duluth, Rochester. I just find it a hard time having the city have to list their property with, with somebody. Because you see the signs, this is a job zone, so if people are looking for acreage, they're gonna contact City Hall or the county if they're looking for land.
I don't want to rely, and this is my personal opinion, as director of development for the city, I don't want to rely on walk-in traffic to sell our industrial park. I want someone that's got access to broader markets advocating on behalf of the city.
Other comments here? Councilmember Reese.
Well, I, I think Rick has addressed a lot of the questions that I had, but from those questions, I'm assuming this is an exclusive arrangement, and there is no, as he referred to, MLS.
I would have to review the proposal, but I wouldn't rule out an MLS arrangement. There will be other realtors that will contact whoever the city might select and state, "I've got someone," and it's, it's very typical for them to negotiate a commission split in that process, so I wouldn't expect that that would not happen.
So, it's not, it is not an exclusive arrangement. I mean, it's...
I would have to review the contract. Again, I've been away from it for a couple of weeks, I don't recall all the details, councilman.
Anyone else?
Bruce, are there any other fees involved besides the, the fee that's generated by the sale of, of a parcel of property?
You mean, besides the realtor's commission?
Yes.
There will be costs involved in the closing, updating of abstracts, certain closing costs that may be the responsibility.
Fees for this realty company. Do we pay them a retainer fee or anything?
Not at all, no. If they don't, if they don't sell property, they don't get paid any money.
And if they put up signs that advertise this, whose cost is that?
That's their expense.
So, at this point, if I understand this right, we're saying that the entire acreage of the old airport is now in the hands of Pro One Realty?
Only those parts that are ready to be developed and sold.
But in the future, as more, as more of the infrastructure goes in, will that arrangement with this one company continue to carry forward?
They would be the listing agent, yes.
So, ultimately, they, they probably would be the listing agent for all the property out there.
Right, and, and I don't recall, I, I think there might be a three-to-five-year, it's either three- or five-year period that the listing arrangement would run. And on industrial properties, that's very common, because it takes a while to get the marketing up to speed. It's a lot different than taking a building and marketing it for sale. When you're dealing with bare land, when you've got phased improvements, phased availability of properties, there's a lot of work involved in just making that property sellable.
You know, I'm just thinking here of the property in southeast Wilmer, when DBI, Dunick Brothers, was preparing that land for sale and to recruit businesses, they didn't, they didn't go to a realtor, they went to a, you know, a business recruiter. I think it was Solomon, Solomon or something? It was some company that they hired to go find businesses for them.
Well, I think that's where Economic Development Commission comes in, Mr. Mayor.
I've not heard of this where, you know, one realtor gets that, that whole package, kind of, is there a period of review here, or, or anything?
Well, there's a listing period that would be spelled out. We would have to prepare a listing contract, and, and that has yet to be, there's been no final listing contract prepared. It's not atypical at all to engage the services of a real estate professional in marketing municipal industrial parks. A lot of times, the city will try to do it themselves. You'll see power cooperatives that try to market their own property. In my opinion, and in my experience, what they end up with is bare land, just like they started with, only improved bare land.
All right, anything else from council? Doug, go ahead.
I, I, Bruce, I, I don't know, there's, there's still questions in my mind, and you said it's three or five years, but yet you say there's no agreement. I, I'm trying to understand this.
The proposal was for three or five years, I don't recall. Again, we do not have a signed agreement.
So, what do we agree to here if we don't have an agreement?
To engage the services and to move forward with that agreement. You know, there would still be some details to negotiate along the way.
Some, some way, it seems to me that I should have the agreement in front of me before I agree to it. Why...
Pardon? I can understand your, your concern in that regard. I was not sure to what extent the council would want to be involved in managing that level of detail.
Well, I don't know that I want to manage it, but I guess, you know, with, I can hear Rick has got some concerns, and I think I did, too, but... But what are the issues? Is it the fact that we're dealing with one firm? I think it's that we're dealing with one firm. How long is the agreement going to be for? And if they don't, if they don't perform, I guess I would like to see it come to an end, so that we could maybe encourage the services, someone else that's going to... Well, you can set the term. I mean, you can decide tonight if you want to limit it to three years, or you want to limit it to five years. In our opinion, and we've tried to express this, and I think that the committee accepted the concept the other night, was that there are realtors who specialize in, in different types of property. To throw it open to all the realty companies in the community doesn't make sense. You don't see a lot of Pro One signs sitting in front of houses, because that's not what they specialize in. They specialize in the sale of commercial and industrial property. It's logical, then, that you would look to someone with that kind of expertise, someone that has made these connections over a long period of time, to help you market your industrial park.
I should add that letters went out to nine or 10 local firms requesting proposals.
And you got proposals from two?
Two, that's correct.
I have a question, Bruce. You know, we know now that there are a few companies... I have a question, Bruce. You know, we know now that there are a few companies that want to expand into what we call the old airport property. And, you know, the city staff have nurtured that discussion or maybe the discussion has come out of the Economic Development Center where Steve and Kathy work. So if those ideas and those projects come to closure and the companies that we hear are interested, say, "We're going to do it," who, does this realty company get a commission for the work that you guys have done or that Steve and Kathy have done?
There would be no commission paid. We will identify those particular firms and make them a protected list. That's very commonly done. Same with residential real estate. There's very often protected lists that go with a residential listing. So we will name those properties or name those companies.
All right. Or you have already done a lot of the work?
Absolutely. Yes, we have letters of interest, letters of intent from several companies.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Fagerly?
I know Bruce had made a comment that power companies usually develop land. It's empty. I think we have one north of town, Touchstone or something like that. And there's a cabinet maker there and they just got a new tenant and that's the owner of the land. It's RVA.
Exactly.
And I think the Realtor that we're looking at is the one that markets that.
He does now.
I think he did before. He was the one that had the big public announcement when they developed that.
Okay. I don't recall.
All right. There's a motion on the table, or I'm sorry, the council has made a motion and a second. It's been seconded, right, Kevin?
Right.
To engage the services of Pro One Realty. Any other comments before you vote, Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to disclose a business relationship that I have with the firm that was not chosen and therefore I will abstain on this.
All right. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Do we need to, as part of this motion, attach a three-year or five-year period of time?
You can if you wish, if you want to get into that part of the arrangement. Would you care to do that?
I guess I bring that up for discussion. That was a point that we talked about to...
So Mayor, our recommendation would be five years. I think that moving into a new park like that, three years would be... The expectation of getting a lot sold, marketed and sold and developed is unreasonable. I mean, we haven't even built the streets out there yet.
Tom, did you want to say something?
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, will we see this agreement? They're going to come up with Pro One Realty too. Will that come before the council or we're just giving you carte blanche to make the agreement with them?
My expectation would be that it would be a standard listing agreement. There would probably be some additional requirements in there on behalf of the Realtor for marketing assistance and the expectations that we would have for that particular company to provide marketing for the city property. If, you know, if the council has some specific terms or clauses that they feel are important to be a part of that basic listing agreement, that's would be fine.
Does anybody want to make any amendments with specific requirements on the contract? All right, then it's time to vote on this. Those in favor of this motion say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
Abstain.
And one abstention. The motion passes. Bruce, go ahead.
Second item on our agenda was airport redevelopment, industrial park expansion, environmental review. Staff reviewed the environmental review process used to determine environmental impacts for the redevelopment of the former airport into an expanded industrial park. It was noted that the city had received no correspondence or claims of environmental issues from any individuals or agencies. The difference between the state and federal environmental review process was discussed, as were the requirements for the approval. After discussion, the committee recommended the adoption of an ordinance making a negative declaration of needs for a EIS and to satisfy the state's EAW process. That resolution is attached as Amendment A and I'll introduce that in resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution making a negative declaration of need for an EIS. Further comment about this? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question on this process. We make that recommendation that we basically don't need an EIS. The state will give a final verdict on that? And we're recommending that we don't need an EIS, but based on the EAW results.
The state allows a municipality as a legislative action to make that determination unless appealed by an individual or state agency, the city's action stands.
Oh, that's interesting. It's a little different than in private industry. Thank you.
Go ahead, Bruce.
It would be a resolution if you were...
Did we vote on?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Tarkin?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlick?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
The resolution passes.
Also, the committee recommended that the city make a formal finding of no significant environmental impacts for the federal environmental assessment process. And that would be a motion and I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the city make a formal finding of no significant environmental impact for the federal environmental assessment process. Comment? Simple motion, Kevin. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
The motion is that the city certify, the city administrators, a certifying officer for federal environmental review and to consent to accept the jurisdictional of the federal courts if action is brought under the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969. And I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the city certify our administrator as a certifying officer for the federal environmental review. A further comment about this? Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried.
On number three, Mr. Mayor, the committee discussed a Church lobbying agreement. The committee discussed the pending review, renewal of agreement with lobbying services with David Church and Associates. The pros and cons of the city lobbyist relationships were debated and staff had expressed concerns over staffing turnover with Church and Associates and the lack of consistent representation received by the city for its lobbying efforts. Staff further stated that the city's relationship with the federal congressional offices had progressed to a point where a Washington-based lobbyist was no longer necessary to gain access to the political process. In the case of the waste treatment plant project, Legislative Liaison of Donahue and Associates has been effective in working with the congressional offices on behalf of the city. In conversations with Wilmer Municipal Utilities staff, it was noted and stated that they would not continue the lobbying relationship absent the city's cost sharing. Although the Municipal Utilities was not displeased with the effort they had received from Church, it was a position of the utility staff that they would allow the city to lead in any discussion affecting the future of this agreement. Staff was recommending at the committee that the agreement of David Church and Associates not be renewed and after discussion, it was a committee recommendation that the city not review the lobbying agreement with David Church and Associates. I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion and a second that the city not renew its lobbying agreement with David Church and Associates. Pardon me? Yes, yes. In the audience, Bob, you want to come up? Jerry, you can speak to if you want.
Bob Bonowitz, 3326 Eagle Ridge Drive West. Mayor, council members, I was surprised to read in the paper that there was discussion about terminating this relationship. Having had the opportunity to work with David Church and his staff for a couple of years now, I would highly recommend retaining that contract. I think, as Bruce pointed out, some things do take a while to get the momentum up and I think I've seen them performing to our liking, at least at the utility. I think the city has a lot of other projects as well. I think it's just too soon to discontinue that relationship. Based on all we've heard from the legislators that we've met with, Church and his staff are highly respected. They can get us access. They know where the money's at in the various bills. They're there so they can pursue these things on a daily basis. And in our case, at least, we think that's happening. There have been changes, as was noted in the paper, at any rate with staff, and that's true. But the key people have always been the same. David Church and Jamie have always been there. A new person that has been working with us directly is Cody Davis Hill. And she is out of Smith College. They all, of course, do some work at the legislature prior to getting involved with lobbying, it's my understanding. But she also is very well-respected and is doing a very good job for us. We asked for between 1.3 and 1.2 and 1.5 million dollars to help us with plant life extension at the last meeting we had a couple of months ago. She called just two weeks ago and wanted to know what our matching contribution would be. And Mike told them that we would be willing to support up to a half a million dollars if we can get the 1.5 million is what they're working on right now. So I'd hate to see us discontinue that relationship and lose that possibility at this point. And as I said, they're just instrumental in getting us access to these legislators and guiding us in terms of what to ask for and how to go about asking for it.
Thank you, Bob. Jerry, do you want to say something?
Pretty much the same. Jerry Gash, 1200 Southeast Wimmer Avenue on the commission also. I truly believe too that David Church understands our needs and is in line or on the line with an open ear for what's happening on Capitol Hill that can help us. He has access to the people that can help us. His employees are experienced and capable and are respected by our senators and congressmen. They've commented directly to us that they know him and respect his work. Basically, what Bob said I have to repeat too. It's, they're doing a good job for us and I think it's important that they continue.
Thank you, Jerry. Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly don't want to minimize the impact that our local staff has and the inroads that they've made in making the contacts out in DC. But when you have a lobbyist, they're there all the time and are having more contacts than what we could possibly have. And I know that maybe there's been some opportunities that were missed. Maybe we felt that maybe we should have gotten some funds through them. It didn't happen. But we have other things coming up too. You know, I think about the quiet zones. One of the responses that we've given people is that we're going to look and try to find additional funding. Or maybe there's another mechanism to solve that problem. But it seems to me if we're unhappy with what we've gotten from them, we owe it to them to sit down and talk to them, say, "We think you missed the boat on this, this, and this. We're not happy and this is our expectation." It just seems a little bit unfair to just all of a sudden pull the rug out from under them and not renew their contract. So I have a little bit of a problem not renewing the contract.
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Anderson basically just said everything that I wanted to say. I was surprised to see it in the paper. I think that too, that it's too early and we have too many things in the works to just simply say, "We don't want you anymore." And certainly, in any professional relationship like that, you want to treat folks, I think professionally. And I think Councilmember Anderson's suggestion is well-taken that if we're not happy, we need to sit down with them and discuss exactly why that is. I do not support the motion as presented.
Councilmember Reese?
Number of years ago, and I don't even remember how many years ago it was, I stood in for Mayor Heike when Colin Peterson opened his offices as Mayor Pro Tem. And the day that we had that opening, Congressman Peterson mentioned to me, he says, "You guys really need to have a lobbyist." He says, "It's going to do you a lot of good." He says, "I know a guy by the name of David Church and he's done a lot of work for the city of St. Cloud." He says, "If you could get to his services, you know you'll get things done because he's very effective and very well-respected." But he says, "It might be hard to get in because he does represent a lot of cities within California and he is a very busy man. But if we can get you in there," he says, "I think it'll do you some good." And I think that's been evidenced over the period of time that we've utilized his services. I've sat in David's office. I've sat with his staff. Very professional. I've gone to senators' offices. I've gone to representatives' offices and I've sat with him and some of his staff. And I find him to be very effective. Yes, their expertise is in the area of transportation. I appreciate Mr. Bonowitz and Jerry coming here and speaking because I really did have concerns even when I saw that it was on the agenda and the possibility that the Community Development Committee would be assessing the possibilities of discontinuing the agreement. I really was quite surprised when it came back and said that the committee felt that way. And I will state the same as Mr. Gardner. I am in opposition to this. I think that to get this level of representation in Washington and the abilities and the contacts that he has developed over the years, and he knows Minnesota. I believe he's from Minnesota, if I'm not mistaken. I think he's, is he from?
St. John's University.
St. John's University. And I think that really helps a lot too, in him knowing our larger extended community. So I would speak in opposition to this.
Anyone else? Councilmember Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe we need staff to explain their recommendation to us. Bruce had several good reasons at the meeting and I think maybe Mick might have some comments on it also.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I agree. I thought Bruce had done a good job of detailing our analysis. You know, we were looking at it. I just, I met recently with the mayor and we've agreed that we need to go through and do a better job this coming year of scrutinizing our budget. What kinds of projects are we involved in? What kinds of things are we doing that maybe if we didn't spend this money, it could be better utilized elsewhere? Well, the $54,000... Well, the $54,000 number, it's actually been cut in half now since the municipal utilities agreed to participate. $27,000 that we're paying to Church and Associates for their lobbying efforts in Washington DC. So we were looking at it from an economical point of view. What have they done for this $54,000 a year? And I'm not sure how many years we've been involved with them now. But I know, I do recall that in the very first year we had our relationship with David and his company, we ended up with a million-dollar grant. Would we have gotten it otherwise? I don't know. I know that we would have been in Washington trying to get it had we not had that relationship with Church. Another thing I looked at was, how many times can I or one of the council members or the mayor or one of the staff members buzz out to Washington and sit down and talk with people in Colin Peterson's office or Senator Coleman's office for a lot less than $27,000 in a year? I know that for a fact. We also considered this recent development with the Water Development and Resources Act, where Senator Coleman was instrumental in including $15 million in that bill for the city of Wilmer's wastewater treatment plant. Church didn't have anything to do with that. Now granted, the House version of that bill did not include this appropriation for Wilmer, but, you know, we're going to try to shepherd it through the committee process, and hopefully it ends up in the final bill. My point there is, there are ways of reaching out to our people in Congress and the staffs that work with them and for them to, I think, get at the kinds of resources that we need for some of our projects. I don't dispute the fact that the municipal utilities is in the middle of a very important project. What are we going to do with our generation facility? And that perhaps Church and Associates can help them secure some additional funding. Will he do that if the city of Wilmer pulled out on its 50% of the contract? I don't know. I guess I've never asked him that question. One of our concerns was the staff change order. Again, I don't dispute the change over. I don't dispute the fact that David Church and Associates is well-respected, and they have a lot of connections, and they've been doing business in Washington and Minnesota for many, many years. I'm not even going down that road. And I wouldn't pretend to challenge it. But I think that with that change over they've had, at least on our last experiences with the firm when we were in Washington, was not impressive. Not impressive at all. And it started us thinking, well, is this the kind of representation that we can expect in the future? So there were a number of issues, a number of concerns, that led us to present our recommendation to the committee.
Anything else, Rob?
No. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to request of staff just to help me with this agreement, because I think what I'm seeing is something that was, just took effect on April 1st of this year, and it is set to expire on the 31st of March next year. Is that how I see this?
I think that the current agreement had expired or something earlier in the spring.
So we do not have an agreement?
This is the agreement that Church's office sent to me to renew their previous-year contract, which had expired.
Okay, so this isn't something that we already have?
That's correct.
Again, my concern is that we, and I mean this in a relative sense, this is going to sound really bad, but my concern is that, relatively speaking, we're tripping over dollars trying to pick up pennies. I mean, $27,000 is a lot of money. I had to gulp when I said $27,000. But if you think about $27,000, who can we hire to do much of anything for the city for $27,000, let alone give us some access to the process in Washington DC?
I'd like to make a couple of comments. I've known David ever since he started working with us. He is from Minnesota. He's a graduate of St. John's University. When he finished college, he went to work for Senator Eugene McCarthy as a staff person and ultimately became his chief of staff. He also worked for three other congressmen and one senator. He did that for 22 years, and then he went into private practice as a lobbyist. He's been doing this congressional work as a staff person, then as a lobbyist, for the past 45 years. In Washington DC, everything is based on seniority, and it's based on relationships. David Church has both. He's got seniority, he's regarded strongly by the Minnesota delegation, both congressmen and senators. They all know him. And he knows them, and he knows their staff. And he's hired some of their staff people at times when they were no longer working for a particular congressman. He, I want to show you the one incident that happened about two years ago. I went out to visit with Senator Norm Coleman at the time, and that's when we had been authorized a million dollars by Congress that had been signed by President Bush, and it was stalled, because Minnesota Department of Transportation was claiming that that million dollars was theirs, and it wasn't to come to the city of Wilmer. And I think you may recall that discussion, where we had been authorized the money, but it wasn't coming to us. I went to Senator Coleman's office and met with his legislative director for about an hour to talk about this. And then from Senator Coleman's office, I went to David Church's office, which was about three blocks away, and I walked in, and we sat down, and we were talking about the same problem. While David and I were talking in his offices, he got a phone call from the legislative director in Senator Norm Coleman's office, saying, "The mayor of Wilmer was just up here complaining that they're not getting their money. What should we do?" And so Senator Coleman's staff person was calling David Church to figure out the strategy to break that money loose. What later happened was Church organized a meeting between Colin Peterson, Jim Obestar, and Senator Coleman to break that money loose. And so, you know, that million dollars, would we have gotten it without Church? Possibly, but I doubt it. Because he said he had been through the same problem in St. Cloud a number of years before, when St. Cloud had been promised a sum of money for transportation purposes, and MINDOT had tried to secure it in the state offices. And David had to then break that logjam out in Washington to get the money to St. Cloud. That's what experience does, and that's what seniority does. He charges $54,000 a year for his services. I sit on the State Board of MMUA, the Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association. We just hired a lobbyist, MMUA just hired a lobbyist in Washington DC for $75,000 a year. I think the price that he offers is a lot of money, but it's not as much money as what lobbyists generally get in Washington DC. I think it's because David is from Minnesota. I think it's that. And he has an affinity for outstate Minnesota, because he grew up in outstate Minnesota. He married a woman from St. Cloud. I don't agree with our, I don't disagree with our city administrator very often, but I think with this situation, I would respectfully ask the city council not to terminate this contract. I think there are some sensitive discussions going on on behalf of the utilities, that ultimately, if they don't get help from the federal government, that money's going to have to come from local resources. And they're talking of upwards of $2 million. So we need that help from the federal government, and if we have any chance at it, I think David's a good vehicle to try to get that money for the utilities. When you think of it, you know, $54,000 is split in half between the city and the utilities. We're each contributing $24,000, $27,000. It's all city money, you know, whether it's utilities or council. But we're getting, basically, we're getting, as a city, we're getting the services of a federal lobbyist with 45 years of experience for a little more than $2,000 a month. I think that's a pretty good deal for the city of Wilmer. Now, that excludes what the utilities is paying, but that's what the city budget on this side of the table would be responsible for. So what I would suggest is if there is some discontent or dislike of what Church has done, that we do sit down with him, and we talk to him about it. He has assured me that he's nowhere near retirement. Jamie Jones is his senior lobbyist. He is very loyal to David Church, and he indicates he's not leaving the Church firm. This Cody Hill-Davis was here in Wilmer about a month ago. I think she met with somebody at the utilities, and I met with her and David. She's a sharp, bright young woman, about 30-ish, who has had about eight years of experience on Capitol Hill. I think she is a good addition to his staff, and apparently she's kind of shepherding the Wilmer accounts. And I think she's worth working with. What I would suggest is that we renew it for one year, and sit down with David and explain our disappointment, and ask, you know, for his input on that, which he, I'm sure he will provide. But I think the discussions at the utilities are very sensitive right now in Washington DC, and I think it would be a mistake to pull out of the contract at this time. So those are my comments. Anyone else?
Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an aside as well here, that knowing that Congressman Peterson and Congressman Obestar are both powerful committee chairs, I think, I suppose it might be possible that to terminate the contract might ruffle some feathers within those offices, and I don't know that we necessarily want to even take the chance of endangering those relationships to any degree.
I'd like to offer a couple other comments. One is, what are we getting, you know, in return? We hire a lobbyist to bring home money to Wilmer. And my understanding is that we got a million dollars for the airport project. David had also worked very hard last year to put an earmark in the congressional budget for $500,000, which was then taken out of the budget, along with many other earmarks by the Bush administration when they were, you know, scrutinizing the budget. So not only did Wilmer lose $500,000, but many other earmarks for funding were also lost. And I think, didn't Church get some money for the utilities for planning purposes originally? $100,000 or something?
No, we initially asked for 300 for the study.
And he didn't?
We haven't received any of that. It's turned into one and a half million.
Okay, all right.
By the way, Clovisharr's-
You better come up here, Bob. They can't get you on the TV.
Clovisharr's, whatever that individual's called, her chief of staff, wanted to know as well what we were going to require in the long run. And we told them, depending on what we do with our utility, it's between 20 and 50 million dollars. So that's also in the hopper, if you will, and something that they will be pursuing. So it's, you know, will we get it and get any of it? I have no, you know, I can't predict that. But I think it takes time. It takes time to get this kind of thing going. How many years have we been, two or three? Maybe three? That this has been in place? And I don't think you can expect very rapidly to get money. It takes time. It takes, as we've been told in the past, they just have to keep pursuing this and trying different avenues until something happens. I don't know if we, if you have ever asked him, Les, about how long it took to get some of those big projects in California? I never did. Maybe that'd be a good idea to find out, you know? I'm sure it didn't happen overnight.
Right. You know, we have spent now about $162,000 if this, if we finish the third year. I think it's three. Steve, do you know, is this the third year or second year? Okay. So, and in return, you know, he has brought back to the city a million dollars, and he had $500,000 that was taken out of the budget that he had worked to get in there last year. So, you know, he does get the job done. It may not be, you know, exactly on our timeline, but he does produce. And the other thing is, if we terminate with him, and if we want to go back to him in the future, like Colin Peterson said, he may not want to connect with us again. So, you know, it's a relationship thing. He's got the relationships in Washington, and we have a relationship with him. I would suggest that we continue it. All right. Anything else? Anyone else? The motion's on the table, and it's been seconded to terminate the contract with Church and Associates. Those in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
The motion fails.
Point of information, Mr. Mayor. Would it be in order to offer a motion to renew the agreement with Church and Associates for one year at this time?
Well, that's how it's done anyway, isn't it? It's a one-year contract.
Actually, when you reach the expiration date, it's month to month.
If it's in order to do so, Mr. Mayor, I would offer that motion.
All right. Is there a second to that?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to establish a contract on a yearly basis with Church and Associates. Any other comment about that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, back to you, Bruce.
Item number four is annexation notice policy. The committee discussed the topic of providing public notification for orderly annexation. Current state statutes require that notice be provided to adjacent property owners for annexation action that occurs by ordinance. However, orderly annexation procedures do not have a statutory requirement for public notification. It was desire of the committee that the city do more to involve the public and make an orderly annexation decisions. A survey of other regional centers by staff showed only one city that provided any notice for orderly annexation actions. And after discussion at the committee, it was recommended that the city of Wilmer provide notice to property owners within 300 feet of subject properties for meetings when a planning, meeting with the planning commissions with review for orderly annexation proposals prior to making a recommendation to the council. I'll introduce that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second that the city of Wilmer provide notice to property owners within 350 feet of subject property for meetings when the planning commission will review orderly annexation proposals. Comment about that? Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Jerry? Was there a no? There was one no on this.
The fifth item on the agenda was wayside horn demonstrations. Staff informed the committee that representatives of a firm that is doing a quiet zone study will be in the city of Wilmer on Tuesday, May 22nd, to give a demonstration on wayside horns. The demonstration will be at 10:00 AM at the Seventh Street Crossing. Wayside horns are one example of what a community can do to attempt to reduce train noise at Item six was Habitat for Humanity. Jolene Overland, representing Habitat for Humanity, appeared before the committee to inform us that the- that the house on the corner of Ann Street and Becker Avenue had been demolished. Habitat for Humanity had purchased the house for, to be demolished and to make a lot available for construction of a new Habitat home. New construction is scheduled to begin within two weeks with occupancy of the new home in December of this year. And a family has been selected to purchase the home. Ms. Hovland asked about permit fees for Habitat for Humanity homes. In the past, the city had waived building permit fees, but was explained to her that the city no longer waives building permit fees, and that is, that is the current policy of the city. If there are no questions, motion to file a minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to file the minutes. Councilmember Reese?
Just a quick question, just a, hopefully, I can get a real quick summation of this, because I can't be there tomorrow on this wayside horn. I assume this is a stationary horn that's located at the railroad intersection?
Bruce, can you explain that?
I'll attempt to give a description. A wayside horn is a stationary mounted horn, and it's my understanding that the signal from the horn is triggered electronically by a train approaching a crossing. And what you do is you have the warning horn only at the crossing, and it is unidirectional. It's, it's, the noise is distributed right at the crossing. It eliminates the trains moving up and down the rail, blowing the horns. So it does provide a significant reduction in noise.
And it meets the federal requirements evidently?
It is a federally approved option, yes.
And how does the cost compare to, I can't remember the other option, the quiet zone?
I eagerly await the report, so that I might learn that.
Okay, all right. All right. Thank you. All right. Anything else? Those in favor approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. Thank you, Bruce. Next is the consideration of an ordinance to rezone certain lands from R4 to R2. Dawn Skogstad. Bruce?
Mayor Heike, members of the council. Dawn Skogstad is the owner of property in Parkview Estates, which is that area just south of Voss Park on 1st Avenue Northwest. She owns a number of lots that were rezoned several, or I'm sorry, that are zoned, R4, medium density. Several years ago, they had proposed development of townhomes on those properties. They are now looking at developing single-family housing to be more consistent with the balance of the neighborhood, so they are requesting an R2 zoning. It's a recommendation of staff that the rezoning ordinance be introduced for a public hearing for the next council meeting, which is June 4.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for a public hearing to introduce this ordinance on behalf of Dawn Skogstad for the comment. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry it. The next item is a consideration of a premise permit renewal, the Elks Lodge, number 952. Kevin, can you explain that?
Mayor Heike, members of the council, you have before you a request for Elks Lodge to renew their two-year premise permit gambling license. This is the Class A permit that should run from, I think it's June 1, I believe.
June 1.
For two years. This is probably their 15th one or whatever. It's kind of standard renewal, and staff recommendation that we adopt the resolution approving the application and submit it to the gambling control board.
Thank you, Kevin. Council?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for a resolution which approves the premise permit gambling license for the Elks Lodge. Further comment? Roll call?
Councilmember Swenson.
Aye.
Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays. The resolution passes. The council needs to consider a resolution that was brought forward at one meeting with the city's attorney. Mick, can you explain that?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, in the special session earlier this evening, the committee talked about the issue of gaining access to properties needed for construction of the interceptor line for a new wastewater treatment plant. We met with representatives Kennedy and Graven, and for your consideration tonight is a resolution authorizing and directing the file, filing of legal action to gain access to property in anticipation of imminent domain proceedings. That's the title of the resolution.
I'd introduce the resolution, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the resolution to authorize Kennedy and Graven to proceed with the action. I don't even know how to say it beyond that. Further comment about this? Roll call?
Councilmember Gardner?
Aye.
Dawkins?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
Tableek?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christensen?
Abstain.
Anderson?
Aye.
Swenson?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, one abstention.
The resolution passes. On the table in front of you is a, in front of the councilmembers, is, are the guidelines for the city council work session. This is the idea that the council talked about at the retreat, about having periodic work sessions, and staff was asked to draw up some guidelines. Again, this is topic-specific, understanding the issue, selecting best options, building commitment for that. This, these work sessions will generally be scheduled for 4:45 PM on Wednesdays, when the Labor Relations Committee is not meeting. The council will confer with staff and other experts on significant items under consideration requiring eventual official actions. The first topic is the topic of funding for our public library. And I've asked our city administrator to contact Pioneer Land Director and librarian to be present to talk about what the situation is, what's happening at the legislature, let the council talk this over, and strategize. So that's the first topic. The first meeting, Mick, when would the first meeting be scheduled for?
The Labor Relations Committee isn't meeting, so it'll be May 30, Mr. Mayor, if that's when the council wanted to meet.
Is that already with councilmembers? May 30 at 4:45? Okay, that's the first meeting. And then at the end of the meeting, I would ask the councilmembers to identify other topics that they wish to discuss at future meetings. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Dawkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to note here, it's stated in here, while these study sessions are open to the public as observers, the public will not be allowed to participate in the council staff dialogues. But it's important that the public understands that they can come and participate by listening.
That's right. It's a public meeting, but only staff and council discussions. And Mayor? Okay. Anything else? Doug?
Well, it says that we're going to meet when the Labor Relations Committee is not meeting. Well, we know the Labor Relations Committee meeting doesn't meet certain times of the year very much. We're not going to meet every time, are we?
I think what we should do is let the council decide that at each meeting, if they, if there's a need to meet, and how often they want to meet.
At each meeting of this work session?
At the end of this work session on the library-
Set a time and-
The council will then decide what is the next topic they want to talk about, and when do they want to meet.
What kind of urgency there is to discuss it, is what you're saying.
Okay, right. Any other questions about this? We'll proceed then with May 30 as the first work session. Councilmember, Councilmember Gardner, you wanted to say something about the ultimate fighting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We took action earlier tonight to table the proposed ordinance banning ultimate fighting. However, we currently don't have a mechanism that would keep such events from happening while we have this under consideration. And I wanted to bring the city attorney and/or the police chief into this discussion for a moment. But what I would propose is to talk briefly about the possibility of implementing a moratorium for a period of, say, six months on such events while we continue to, to study this. And I think we can, I've taken a stab at it, and when I, when I get time to making the motion, I will, I will give that. But I wanted to ask the city attorney about that.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's been tabled. From my understanding, we don't discuss it.
Rich, can you help us on that?
The ordinance is what's tabled. The subject of a moratorium hasn't come before the council until now.
So it's a different subject?
Certainly is.
Okay. Rich, do you want to say anything about a moratorium? When is it appropriate and when is it not?
If the council wants to direct that, I think that's permissible to do.
And how does a moratorium usually set up? Is it for a period of time, or how do you do it?
Should be for a specified period of time and not more than period of time.
Any other comments about this?
Mr. Mayor, to give us something then to have under discussion, I, like I said, I'll take a stab at this. I would move to implement a moratorium on events commonly referred to as ultimate fighting, quote, or mixed martial arts, quote, within the city of Wilmer for a period of six months or until an ordinance regulating such events is adopted by the Wilmer City Council, whichever is earlier. Nothing in this motion shall be construed to ban martial arts or other sporting events sponsored by existing established local schools of martial arts or classes taught by public schools or community recreation organizations or other sporting events to which physical contact is incidental.
Okay, that's a motion. Is there anyone who wishes to second that?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to establish a moratorium on ultimate fighting until the ordinance is established. Further comment about this? Councilmember Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The gentlemen that spoke earlier, the four, were hoping that we would come up with some better language for the ordinance, and they were going to participate in that. I think we're just doing the opposite here by putting, making this moratorium. I don't suspect that we're going to have somebody rush into Wilmer tomorrow in the next six months and going to ask for a permit to do this. And if they do, we can address it at that time on a, as a come basis. I would, I would speak against this in, I'm hoping we could sit down and work with these four gentlemen that were here earlier.
Any other comments? Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, I don't make the motion to, you know, cause any trouble or anything, but the fact of the matter remains is that it's possible that someone could come in. Right now, we, to my knowledge, and perhaps the chief or the city attorney would like to speak to this, but right now, we really don't have unless someone wants to use public facilities, a motion for approving or denying any kind of a permit. I mean, a lot of places, right now, you wouldn't even need a permit to come in and hold such an event. All this motion does is put in place a moratorium whereby we don't have to worry about having such events in the city for a period of up to six months while we get the answers we need and, and get an ordinance in place that works. That's all it is.
Chief, did you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was one of the reasons that staff brought up the issue before somebody actually slated event for our community was to take a proactive approach, because presently, my understanding is somebody could have a pay and fight event in our community, and there would be no way to regulate that. When I say a pay and fight, that's anybody from the audience pays his, you know, entry fee and signs a waiver, and they go at it. You know, that was one of the practices that was the problem down in Red Wing. And that's the reason that staff brought the information to the, to the council back in, in February, was to try to be proactive on that issue.
And Chief, that came to your attention through the Police Department of Red Wing? Is that how you heard of that?
Well, I had seen it in the media first in January, and then there was a local story on a local individual who was looking at, and I, and I think Mr. Riddler spoke briefly about that individual that was looking to hold one of those events, and he wasn't sanctioned or anything like that in our community. So that's why the original discussion of ultimate fighting, tough men contests, or whatever you want to call them, came up back in, in the first part of February, was not only that activity's unregulated, you know, we're, we're one of 28 states that don't regulate it. Not only is it unregulated, but there are some concerns about the public safety with regards to the audiences.
Thank you, Chief. Ron, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we currently have an ordinance against dogfighting in Wilmer?
There's a state statute.
State statute?
That's correct.
Same with roosters?
That's correct.
Again, I speak against this. I just think we need to work with these fellows, and I, I don't think we're, somebody's going to rush in tomorrow and jump on the bandwagon here and put on one of these ultimate fights. And if we do, we can deal with it. They'd have to get permission or not?
Chief, do they have to get permission to have a ultimate fighting event?
I don't believe that there's anything that requires that at this point, if it's held in a bar or a private place.
How about professional wrestling that they've held in Wilmer, like the YFC had just a while back here? Is that, is that something that we permitted, or they just?
I think, and Kevin can correct me, I think if you're a nonprofit organization such as Youth for Christ, I don't think that they're required to get an event, event permit to have that in a public place like they did the auditorium.
How about when we had wrestling at, like, the VFW and I forget where else, but I know they've had it a few times outside there and one time inside. Was that, is that something they had to get a permit from the city for? Because they charged. Did we not permit that?
Well, I don't remember. Was that recently? Oh, a few years ago.
Oh, it's a few years ago. I remember us having discussion about it, but I don't remember.
Kevin, you-
I drew an absolute blank with it.
Before my time? Was it on private property?
VFW.
VFW.
They had it in a parking lot a couple summers, and then once inside.
I'm thinking they didn't.
Okay. So there are lots of things that could happen that we don't have ordinances for, right?
Yeah.
And we need to protect against every one of them. Well, sometimes you can have too many and too many rules to enforce.
Any other comments before you vote?
Last comment, Steve. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so it's clear, the motion is not given in order to prevent working with these other folks, but rather to encourage it. It gives us time to craft something that's going to be useful and sustainable.
All right. The motion is on the table. It's been seconded to establish a moratorium not to exceed six months or until an ordinance is established, whichever comes first. Those in favor of that motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
It sounds like a six to two vote. The motion passes. All right. Let's go to council committee meeting dates, finance.
Finance will not meet next week.
Public safety?
Tuesdays, 29, 4:45.
Tuesday, public works, public safety, 4:45. Community development?
Not scheduled to meet.
And then labor's not scheduled. And then the work session will be May 30 on the library at 4:45 at City Hall. Mick and-
Conference room two. That's the one upstairs.
Upstairs. Anything else to come before the council tonight? Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to the public, in the tomorrow morning, Tuesday, the 22nd of May, at 9:00 AM, 7th Street Railroad Crossing, there will be a demonstration of a-
Wayside horn.
Wayside horn. So all interested, please come.
Good. Thank you. Anything else? Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just an observation, this weekend, my wife and I went to the landfill, and on our way back, we were, we decided to go in and look at the F-14. And when we got there, we noticed on the tarmac four Civil Air Patrol aircraft, and they had a fly-in this weekend. And so we went in and visited with William Willis, who was a retired Air Force C-130 pilot, who is the, who is the commander for the state of Minnesota Civil Air Patrol. And his comment was, "You folks have a really great airport here. We love to fly in to Wilmer, and we'll be here often."
Again, to the public, the jet fighter plane is at the new airport. If you like, please go out and you can walk right up to it, walk underneath it, walk around it, and enjoy the, the static display of a F-14 Tomcat fighter plane. If that's everything, I need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
And it's been seconded. We are adjourned.